Okay, let's call our meeting order. Let's all stand for a moment of silence. I'd like to ask Councilman Sauer that he leaves his pledge.
My pledge to leave is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Danielle, would you call the roll please?
Hi, your press tribes.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Mr. Dolph Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Sharrow.
Here.
Mr. Lancaster.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Ms. Pence.
Here.
Is there any additions or deletions from the agenda? Here and then, we go to the continuity of government announcements. Continuity of government of Luray, Virginia. This meeting of the Luray Town Council is being held pursuant to April thirteenth, 2020 ordinance of continuity in the government of Luray. The town clerk shall read the names of the council members present and identify those who are electronically present. In-person attendance by the public is permitted, subject to the limitations of the most recent executive order of phasing guidelines issued by Governor Northam. This meeting can be viewed live on the town's Facebook page and recording will be available at the town's YouTube channel. Minutes from the meeting will be posted on the town's website after being approved by the town council. Okay, I think everybody has your.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to move to approve the filing consent agenda.
Okay.
Minutes of the regular council meeting of November the ninth, 2020. Council meeting and holiday schedule for 2020. The financial statements ending November thirtieth, 2020, and accounts payable, checks totaled $233,526.6.
Have a motion? Discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll please?
Mr. Sowers.
Yes.
Ms. Pence?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Town of Luray Annual Audit. Sadie, I'm assuming. There she is. I didn't recognize you, that mask on, girl. How you doing?
I'm good.
Fine, thank you.
You all here healthy?
Yeah, healthy and wise.
About to be a little bit wiser.
Healthy.
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 I hope it's good. I hope it's good.
Well, so I'm Sadie Gibson, auditor for the town. Here to talk about the fiscal year 2020 audit results for the year ended June 30, 2020. So, I'm going to give you the results of the audit, some highlights from the financial statements, and then feel free to ask questions if you have them throughout or at the end. Either way. You can go one more. So, in reporting as your auditors, we have two main reporting objectives. The first is to issue our opinion on the financial statements. And they conform with generally accepted accounting principles, and then the second is to report on internal controls in accordance with government auditing standards. So, in relation to that first reporting objective. You can skip through. There you go. Oh, go back one. Either way. So, in relation to that first objective, we've issued what's known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. So, unmodified opinion is the highest and best opinion that the accounting profession offers, and it means we feel your financial statements are materially correct and they conform to generally accepted accounting principles. And then, you can advance the slide. In relation to our other reporting objectives, in accordance with government auditing standards, I'm happy to report that we noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies that we would need to report to you all in internal controls. And then, in relation to compliance, we performed a spectrum of audit procedures to cover state compliance. We audited the urban highway maintenance program, did quite a bit of work in the area of Virginia retirement system reporting, public procurement compliance, and then a new program this year we, the state added for us to look at while we're here doing the audit, the FIRE program funds. So, I'm happy to report, and there's various other areas of compliance we're testing in accordance with state guidelines as well. As a result of all that testing, we found no noncompliance with the terms and conditions of contracts, grant agreements, state regulations, nothing in that area to report to you all. That's the part when we all get smarter. Talk about financial statements. So, I'll give you an overview of the results for FY '20. The first two financial exhibits that are presented in the report are presented on the full accrual basis of accounting, most like the way businesses report. So, in those, we have a total combined figure for governmental activities and business-type activities of the town. The town had an ending net position of 17.8 million, and of that, about 1.6 million was unrestricted to meet the ongoing operations of the town. There was an overall decrease in that position for FY '20 of 707,000. And at the end of the year, there was an overall net investment in capital assets of 16.1 million. So, the vast majority of the town's net position is represented as an investment in the town's assets. I've got a chart coming up next that shows you your net position over the last five years. So, you can see as the big thing going on in the last five years has been that Main Street Bridge project. You can see the impact that's had. But, you know, the jump in 2019 where the town's adding assets that are with some significant state and federal support and increase in fund, in net position. In FY '20, we're at the completion of that project, and we see a little bit more of the local responsibility of the town at that project. So, a little dip in net position, but you can still see the town is higher significantly than it had been even, you know, five years ago. So, I'll talk a little about the fund financial statements. These are exhibits three through six in the report, and they're prepared on a modified accrual basis of accounting, which is most like the way you all prepare your budget, probably more like the numbers you work with all year. The general fund, fund balance at the end of FY '20 amounted to 1,855,974. The general fund saw a decrease in fund balance compared to FY '19 of about 900,000. And at the end of the year, the general fund carried an unassigned fund balance of 1.7, almost 1.8 million, which represents 29% of your FY '20 general fund expenditures. The town had unrestricted cash and cash equivalents of about 1.7 million at the end of the year. So, similar to when we were looking at the net position of the entire town, here you can see the fund balance of the general fund over the last five years. Some decrease in the general fund, which of course we discussed as planned. In the general fund, it mostly consists of unassigned fund balance. The vast majority of the town's assets in the general fund are available to meet operating needs. Now, I mentioned that the town's unassigned fund balance amounted to about 27% of general fund expenditures. The town has established that minimum threshold for that ratio of 20%. So, at 27%, you've exceeded that, and you can see the town has consistently exceeded it over the last five years. And we'll talk a little bit about the general fund budget, a little analysis, the budget for fiscal year '20. So, this is the general fund revenues. If you can see that, the budget for revenues for fiscal year '20 was about 6.4 million. And actual revenues came in under that at 5.2 million. And the largest area where, that drove the, you know, the underage in revenues is, of course, state grant revenues or federal grant revenues in relation to that. And that happened because of the timing of capital projects. So, you'll see if you look back at the prior fiscal years, the opposite situation where revenues were above what was budgeted. And it really just has to do with cutoff of fiscal year end. So, likewise, if we look at the expenditures on the next slide, it's the same situation. So, budgeted expenditures in the general fund were at 7.9 million, and actual expenditures came in quite a bit under that at 6.5 million. And, of course, the biggest area there is the Public Works Department where those capital projects would be reported. So, again, it's just the timing of when those projects happened. So, I have a few charts on some statistical information. This one shows the town's original assessed tax values over a 10-year period, and you can see there's not a lot of change there. Everything's pretty flat. But that information, of course, helps in looking forward to see what's happened in the last 10 years. Not a lot of change in that area. And this is something I always like to point out. This is a statistical table included in the financial report, and it shows the total levy for each fiscal year, and then how much was actually collected during that year. So, for fiscal year 2020, the total tax levy was about 1.5 million, and 94%, almost 95% of that levy got collected in the year it was billed. It shows a very strong collection rate, very consistent with the last 10 years, and that's impressive given everything that the economy's been going through, especially, you know, for fiscal year 2020. So, the town was able to stay pretty consistent on tax collections. So, I'll talk a little about just the water, sewer, and trash funds, proprietary funds of the town. These are on exhibits seven through nine. And these funds had a combined ending net position for FY '20 of 6.8 million. Unrestricted net position of 1 million approximately. And these funds had an overall operating income of 188,000 for the year, and that's after taking into account a charge for depreciation, which is an accounting expense classified as operating, but it doesn't actually represent a cash outflow. And the proprietary funds, the water, sewer, trash funds had an overall decrease of 127,000 compared to the prior year's net position. So, we, as I mentioned, we noted no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls as a result of our audit. You know, this year, I think we didn't even have any, a management memo to provide you all for suggestions for changing anything, because you were pretty satisfied with how things are operating. Certainly, fiscal year '21 is one to keep a close watch on federal revenues because of those additional funds coming in and could result in a single audit for fiscal year 2021. We did propose some adjusting journal entries as a result of our audit, and we did provide those to the town's management, and they've been incorporated into your ledger. And that is, that's all I have for you. Do you all have any questions?
Under general fund revenue, local taxes, is that where our lodging and meals taxes is included?
It sure is. Yep. And you know what might be of interest to you? There's a, there's a table at the back of the report, and I don't know if you have your report handy, that shows, Table Three, if you want to look at it now or at any point. Pages 89 and 90 of the report has detail of your local taxes over the last 10 years by categories. So, property tax, sales and use, utility tax, business licenses, restaurant, food tax, trends in occupancy, cigarette tax, bank stock tax. There's a lot of, it's a good summary. But we are almost there.
Yeah, but it's split, I think, on here. It splits it.
Yep. But if you wanted to know any of those figures, I'm happy to tell you, I do have them in front of me. The whole three. Oh, too far. Yep, if you go back one more, the most, the bulk of them. Oh, I see it splits the screen.
Split, your screen's split.
I got it.
Yeah.
Yep. So, the restaurant tax, there was a decrease as compared to the prior year. A lot of localities are seeing that with COVID. Of course, you would expect it. It looks like about a $40,000 decrease in meals tax as compared to FY '19.
Steve, could you just email us that? Because it's split in our packet, too. Thanks.
That was my question as well. So, where do we stack up against our Commonwealth peers? Are we?
I'd say, I'd say you're right in line with what we're seeing everywhere. You know, what we saw, we expected maybe more of a hit on sales tax than we saw for FY '20. I think sales tax was still pretty strong through June 30th. Of course, I think FY '21, it probably, there may be some more impact than what we saw. Certainly, meals tax is the biggest area, I think. And then, depending, you know, we see some slower collection as time goes for maybe water and sewer, maybe taxes. So, certainly, at the, at the end of June 2020, it's no, there's no way to anticipate exactly the full extent of how COVID's going to affect us going forward. But certainly, some impact already, even just with three months in this fiscal year.
In the actual audit report, though, I think on page 79, it shows the food, meals tax at 75,000, I think, and the transient occupancy at, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. Transient occupancy is 75,000, and the meals tax is 68. Does that, am I looking at that correctly? Page 79, Schedule One.
Page 79.
Yeah.
Yeah, a decrease in 130,000.
It's your Schedule One.
Yep, I'm looking right at it. Yep, food taxes. 638,000, is that where you're looking? Oh, you're looking at the budget variance.
I'm looking at the variance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. Yep, it was. Although, I think if you, on that other table, it does show, I think it's about a $40,000 difference from the prior year.
From year, from year to year, but this is just an issue. Okay, got you. Thank you.
What was the cigarette tax? They down probably?
Yep, cigarette tax, 134,573.
It was only down to, no, it was up.
It was actually up.
Up $4,500.
That's surprising.
Very stressful out there.
Well, that's fine.
There we used to do about 200,000. Did we begin when we first started off? Anybody else got any questions for Sadie?
I only want to say, acknowledge Mary and Danielle, and this is a, and all the staff. For the auditors not to issue any management letter is significant. It shows that everyone's doing a really good job, and I'd like to express that to everyone.
Thank you, Sadie. Appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Good job. As Sadie, Chamber of Commerce, you say he's not here, nor is downtown initiative, right? Recognition to Mr. Lancaster.
Before we do that, can I ask a question about the Flight Test Aerospace? That's been on the menu, on agenda twice. What is that?
It is the company that purchased the building where the LMCC is located, but is moving out of. And the owner just wanted to come in and introduce himself and what their.
Okay, okay. I'm just wondering what that was.
He's not here tonight, right?
Yes, sir. The few times, well, the times that he's been on the agenda, unfortunately, he's had to fly up to different areas of the country to deal with. They are a, basically, an international company that services high-end jet aircraft.
It's sort of like No Show Jones.
Mayor and Leroy, we have two plaques to present to you guys tonight, one each.
You're going to get a good picture there.
And I got chosen, I guess, to do it because I've had the pleasure of working both, for both of you and with both of you. So, and in both instances, it's been a pleasure, and we're going to miss you. We really are. So, Leroy, this is for you in appreciation of your service and dedication to the town of Luray and its citizens. The Luray Town Council member from July 1, 1988 until December 31st, 2020. And without missing, ever missing a meeting. Outstanding.
You want to speak?
Speech.
Speech.
Speech. Got it.
Mayor, this is for you. Well, I've had the pleasure of working with you and for you as well. And this is for your council participation from July 1, 2004 until June 30, 2008. And your term as mayor from July 1, 2008 until December 31st, 2020. It's been a pleasure.
I finished. Before you sit down, stand up again. This is the mayor's plaque. Your name's been added to it.
I've never seen that.
It started in 19, I mean, 1874, so it's come around a long time. And one other thing, this gavel is now yours.
I'm just handing that off to the new mayor.
No, the governor's a great one. That goes with you.
Got you.
And Leroy and Barry, this is from, this is something from the council members personally to you guys.
And the town manager and assistant town manager as well.
And I'm sorry, the town manager and assistant town manager.
Thank all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
It's been a pleasure, town. Okay, let's move right along. CARES Act, staff hazard pay?
Yes, sir. Staff would propose council consideration of a second installment of the hazard pay. Council had approved issuance of hazard pay at the October meeting with the available funding that we have left from our allocation. Staff would propose to include both our full-time as well as our full-time, part-time staff this time, which adds an additional 15,000 to the amount we would request from you all. Again, the funds, the hazard pay is identified as $2,500 for our police officers, $1,750 for our plant operators, and 1,500 for all of our other employees. It is not a bonus. There are certain supervisory employees that are excluded from this hazard pay.
So, you're looking for a motion to accept that?
Yes, sir.
All right, council. Danielle Ballpark.
Mayor, I move that the town council approve $85,000 of the town's allocated CARES Act funding to award hazard pay to the town's full-time and part-time, and full-time, part-time employees as presented.
Have a motion?
I'll second that.
Second. Discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll?
Ms. Pence? No, I believe that the money should go to the community for a food, to contribute to the Page One Food Bank.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Okay. CARES Act, police department salaries.
Yes, sir. This next item, staff would request council to approve that any remaining funds. Not sure what happened here. That any remaining funds, which we estimate to be about $60,000 before any additional expenses occur this month, council would consider appropriating that to offset the salaries incurred by our law enforcement over the past months during the COVID outbreak.
Would it be that much?
I'm sorry?
Is it going to be that much? 60,000?
That's the most that it would be. We, again, anticipate there might be some additional costs as far as supplies or other things, but we, it'll be somewhere near the $60,000 mark that would go back towards our general fund expenses.
And is that including payroll and payroll cost? Does it include payroll and payroll cost for the police department?
Yes, sir.
Okay, council.
Steve, I got a question, though. I guess I'm a little bit fuzzy on exactly how much CARES funding has not been allocated if this is our last chance to decide where it goes at this meeting.
It said $60,000.
That will take care of the rest of the funding from the federal government?
Yes, sir.
And the notion that's on the table is not to give the police additional funds, it's just to simply add to our general fund. So, that 60 would offset money that we've already allocated to pay the police department, not getting extra money. It's that the town would get that 60.
My main question was if there was money not being spent, when you said no to that, that's all the rest of it.
Well, what we're asking is any money, any, any remaining CARES Act funding that is not obligated to an expense that council would approve, that staff utilizing that to reimburse the town for salary, officer salaries as approved, as permitted by the CARES Act.
So, it comes back to the town?
Yes, sir.
Steve, did that include the, what, 40,000 we had in there for the police radio upgrade, or?
No, sir.
I think we didn't mention, okay.
No, sir. We checked into that, and the radios were not a reimbursable expense. We did, with the three new vehicles that we're purchasing, we did purchase new radios for that, which will save us a little money, but no, sir.
So, this goes back into general fund?
It offsets, it offsets general fund expenses.
But it goes back to general fund?
I'm not going to say that because that's not the intent. It offsets general fund expenses.
Gentlemen, I'd really like to.
I'm not getting that. I'm not getting that. You got to break it down a little more for me.
You're correct, but I can't say that you're correct because that's not the intent of the CARES funding.
So, basically, we've already spent the money.
Yes, ma'am.
It's already been budgeted for that way. Instead of using this money to pay additional things, we would be using this money to basically put back into that fund.
To reimburse ourselves.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Which goes back into general fund. Right? You don't have to say it, but it's right.
I won't, I won't argue with you.
Okay.
Gentlemen, I'd really like us to see us give this money to the community in the way of the Food Bank. You know, I know I've talked about it before, but our unemployment numbers are still high. We are a tourist-based economy, and we are coming into a really difficult season. I'd really like to see us give money to the Food Pantry, to Page One, a program that's already established and been in operation for a long time.
Well, we, I did talk to Lawrence Schaefer the other day, and there's predicted. Well, we, I did talk to Lois Schaefer the other day, and there's predicted a real serious problem this winter. And I don't know how much we already provide Page One, if we do any. I like the idea of, of using some of the money we have to help people that are hungry. I do like that idea.
I look around, everybody looks pretty fat, I don't see nobody hungry. I was pointing you in particular.
So they, they have not made a formal request. Uh, has anybody else made a formal request for any additional CARES Act funding? That we have not heard from, or that we're maybe gonna be hearing from tonight?
Uh, there had been, there were. There were requests from a couple of private businesses that had not, uh, applied when the town established the small business grant.
I think Richard Bus did, didn't he?
That, that is one of them, yes, sir.
And, and secondly, uh, if we were to do this, if we were to allocate this to offset any additional CARE, uh, COVID-related expenditures through the end of the year, n- nothing in that would preclude us in the new calendar year from looking at our financials and say, hey, we, we have some margin to then benefit our community.
Our, our plan is to present council, uh, an update on our financial status in January. If there is any betterment due to the reimbursement of our law enforcement officers, and there is any additional revenue in your general fund, council can determine how best to address that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the, the reason I bring that up is because the spirit of what this is, is to benefit our town and community. So any way that we can do that, I do challenge all of us to, to look at that even into the new year. If this is what we need to do for now, maybe we'll know a lot more here in a month or two, and we can reassess that and then reinvest that into our community, because I, I do think that we should.
It's no more guarantee that we can get any more CARES money.
There's not, no, certainly not. And there's no guarantee that our revenues aren't gonna fall far short. I mean, certainly.
And I'm sure they will.
I, I think given the, the report that we just got by the auditor, saying how great of a financial position we're in, I would really like, just because if we do look, if you do look at it in January, then you're looking at not releasing funds until February. Um, so if we could at least dedicate even fifteen or twenty tonight to Page One, that would be great, because that would be money that they would get, uh, immediately to be able to use for January. And then you could reassess and, at a later date to see what you have left.
Can we, uh, distribute money to a nonprofit or a business without re-advertising this? Jason?
Uh, yes, sir, you could. There are a couple of legal, uh, requirements under the CARES Act that would apply to appropriation to Page One. Uh, we would, you would have to restrict that any funds you give to them be used only, uh, and tailored only for folks that have been impacted by COVID. And you would probably also want to require that those funds be, uh, used to distribute assistance, uh, by Page One by the end of the year.
By the end of this year?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not starting it, it's actually distributing it?
That's correct.
Okay.
But if we wait till January, we don't have any of those requirements, right?
That's, that's what Joey's saying, and I think that's the more prudent thing, is that if we, if we put the, if we offset the general fund, uh, revenues with this, it gives us, it, it does give us some flexibility in the general fund after January that we can, we can look at it more carefully and, and we don't have those, as Jerry says, we don't have those restrictions because it's surplus general fund, so, um, it's probably a better way of, better way of doing it than to allocate it tonight with those types of restrictions, because that, I don't know that Page One would be able to document that and get it to us by the end of the year, and, and also that we could, and get it distributed by the end of the year. So we could risk losing it.
Well, I'm glad we had that discussion, though.
Uh, I don't think there's.
Brings awareness to it, for sure.
There's.
I'll take one.
And we may, oh, so, uh, okay, yeah, we still need to make the motion on the general fund, placing the remainder of it in the general fund, I guess.
So I move that the town council authorize that all CARES Act funds that have not been spent by the town are hereby appropriated and expended on police payroll costs incurred by the town during the period beginning March one, twenty twenty, and ending on December thirty, twenty twenty.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Pence? Yes.
Who's next? On Page One?
Uh, there, there's not a motion on that, is there?
No, you just gotta have a motion to give it to them.
We're not, we're not moving to give it to them tonight.
Okay, cool. We'll keep on trucking. Loray Meadows C D B G Award of Contract, Mr. Christman?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, in addition to what's in your packet, there's a small two-page handout that was laying on your calendar. It's, uh, dated December ninth, but it arrived in my email box at about ten fifteen this morning, so.
From Racy, right?
Yeah. I think Pat's been teaching Tyler some bad habits or something. So, uh, in your council summary report, um, this is the issue we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, we did issue a notice of intent to award, and that gave us thirty days to work with the, uh, um, the apparent low bidder and obtain the remaining information that we needed prior to a notice of award letter being issued from the town to Pine Knoll Construction. Now, given that, if you look at the suggested motion, it says quite a bit longer than normal, a little bit shorter than War and Peace, but, but it's getting there. So there are several things in that motion that I would like to, um, explain. The motion for the construction C D B G amounted award did not exceed six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you remember, we were allocated seven hundred thousand dollars to the Community Development Block Grant. Of that, somewhere between seventy thousand and eighty thousand dollars is available to the Regional Commission for use in project management, project advertisement, all of the things that have to go through with a federally funded housing project. Uh, and I say seventy to eighty because our agreement with N S V R C mentioned eighty, that was what was in my original minutes, but the current project budget says only seventy, so I think maybe Richmond pulled ten grand of that back and put it back into construction, so. We'll deal with that with Alex and, um, and Brandon, uh, when we get there, but our, our, our agreement with them is, uh, or will be in effect, um, based on part of the, the second part, the third part of this motion tonight. Um, the sub-grant agreement is a separate item within your packet tonight, and it is, uh, it's a discussion item only. There's a couple of things in there, including property control rights, um, the deed of trust that, uh, Jason and Steve have been discussing back and forth, as well as a surety for the town, uh, in the event that Richmond calls up one day and wants their money back and the project isn't completed, we have a surety bond that we can cash in to, uh, pay that. So, uh, there's several things going on in that motion there, uh, that are all equally important, but the big thing for tonight, in terms of this, is the recommendation of an award, a notice of award letter to be issued to Pine Knoll Construction on behalf of the town. So before we sign a contract on behalf of the town, that comes back probably before you folks, before we issue a notice of proceed letter, uh, which gets them moving dirt on the site, those, these things have to take place before we're gonna get to that. So all we're talking about tonight is just the notice of award. Yep, you are the apparent low bidder. Congratulations. Let's get working on this other stuff.
Have they got, have they got off the pot yet, um, the right-of-way that the caverns, the airport owns and hasn't been deeded?
Well, um.
Or redeeded?
That's a great question. Um, we're not quite sure where they've made progress with that yet. Uh, we understand that the F A A and the D O A V, uh, have not, after three years, have not quite released authority to the local airport authority to divulge that real estate to the Department of Transportation. So, um, depending upon how much of a stickler Richmond's going to be for that road to be a public right-of-way out there, uh, or at least just a public use thoroughfare, um, that could or could not be a stopgap on the project moving forward. You know, I, I know that several members of the Airport Authority have been notified, we've had a couple of meetings, we've talked about it. They believe that their hands are kinda tied. I would be a little bit concerned having public traffic running on that road, uh, for all this time, but being that it's not dedicated to the V, to V dot yet. But, uh, when we're dealing with several different state and federal agencies, it apparently takes more than three years to get that done. Uh, I can't imagine why, but, um, and it come to find out, the initial road relocation when the hangars were built was not quite finished either. Uh, we found that during our survey work this time. So, um, the current survey documents take care of both of those issues. So really, the, the Airport Authority and V dot and F A A and D O A V are going to have to come together to make that, that one particular issue happen. So, um, the surveyor's gonna issue a statement on the, uh, on the alta survey for that property, and if that satisfies the title insurance company for People Incorporated, then that'll, well, there won't be a speed bump there and that project will continue to move. Otherwise, it comes to a grinding halt until that issue is handled. So, that said, we don't intend to ask you to allow us to sign a contract or to issue a notice of proceed letter until we have the sub-grant agreement completed and signed and approved by Richmond so that we know that that's not gonna be an issue and be able to move forward on behalf of the town. So, again, tonight's issue on your agenda is just to approve a notice of award letter to the low bidder for this, for the town's portion of this project, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Looks like they would get that r- right-of-way on who owns it, well, we know who owns it, off of center stage before they move anything with this.
You would, you.
Me too.
You, you would have thought, though, that probably at least a year and a half ago, um, V dot and everybody would have handled that anyway. Actually, if it had been me out there managing that construction project, not one car would have driven on that road until that issue was taken care of, because from a tort liability standpoint, you really open yourself up to some potential liability there. So, we just, not sure why that didn't happen. The F A A has been really slow to release, uh, real estate transaction on that project.
Because that's really a big liability for the town and the county.
We are fifty, we are fifty-fifty owners, uh, backstopping the Airport Authority, so.
I just can't imagine it proceeding until that issue is settled.
I probably agree with you, Mayor, on that, because I just don't think that they're gonna get their ability to move that. But, again, that's an issue that's above this particular C D B G element, and it's out of, really, our ballpark at this point in time because there are so many other players that are working on that, but I, I agree with you. I think that was gonna have to come to center stage and be handled one way or the other.
I don't see how there's any other way around it.
That's a question on the money. Uh, in the, in the staff report, it says that, you know, we negotiated with Pine Knoll to, to, um, defer the installation of the water line and roof drains until later. Now, where does that money come from later?
Okay, so, the C D B G portion is seven hundred thousand dollars. Seventy thousand dollars goes to N S V R C for project management. That leaves roughly six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Of that six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, there is a, about an eighty-some thousand dollar rock clause that's setting out there, because when they start the construction on these items on the left side of this table right here, the impact into rock and limestone out there, pretty prevalent. So, the rock clause is kind of afloat between what they are going to do, which is five hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars, and then if they do encounter that rock, then they'll have to use that rock clause money to pay for that extra expense. If they do not, then they will issue a change order to the town, and they'll come back and they'll add that remaining eighty-seven to up to six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, no more than that total, to be able to complete some of this work. The rest of that work, Jerry, would roll over into the nine million dollar remaining portion of the construction project. We can only pay for up to seven hundred thousand.
But we, we won't get stuck with installing the water lines. That's my concern.
Yeah, because the dollar value, the dollar value's gonna rule here. Uh, we, our grant's only available for so much money. We were very upfront with Pine Knoll about that, and we said, look, this is all we got. What can you do for that amount of money? And, and, uh, subtracting out the rock claws, this is where we come to, so.
So, and then, and on the, um, on the, um, on the other document that we're adopting, uh, we're taking a twenty-year lien on the property? Is that on, on, on the, is that the project, the property as a whole, or is that, what, what is that?
The deed of trust that's being recommended in the sub-grant agreement, which is a little bit later in the agenda, I know Jason has read into this quite a bit. In terms of our obligation for the supplement, Jason will correct me if I'm wrong.
We can talk about it then, I'm s- I, I forgot it to different.
Yeah, we, uh, we're only obligated for the seven hundred thousand dollars, but part of D A C D's requirement is that we make sure that that project lives up to its full potential, as stated by the federal government, for at least a twenty-year period. The deed of trust that's in part of that sub-grant agreement would help guarantee that that did actually take place, um, on behalf of the town. How'd that do, Jason? Close?
Yeah, unanimous.
Thank you.
Don't give him full credit, Jason.
But right now, they do have a sure, surety bond on to protect us.
They, they will have that as part of the sub-grant agreement, and, uh, also they have to deed us, uh, or at least give us in the agreement property control rights during the administration of our construction portion of the project, at which point we give that control back to them and they finish the job.
In my feeling, in my feeling, with these people, I think we need to dot every i and cross every t twice.
That's my, that's why I asked the question.
But I don't trust them.
We're, we're planning on doing that, and, uh, Mr. Watkins has been working diligently to make sure that things are buttoned up tight on the town's end.
Good.
So Brian, following up with what the mayor said, I mean, I don't know any other way to put it. These people are serious about this project now. They're moving forward, have they gotten the construction estimates, have they got their money together?
They've acquired, they've acquired the property, uh, they have taken out the, uh, the various notes, uh, they have engaged in their own general contractor. We have, hopefully, getting ready to engage our portion with the general contractor. So, barring some catastrophic issue with the right-of-way or with, uh, you know, a deed of trust that they are not able to execute for whatever reason, at which point we're out of the game altogether, um.
So who starts first? Do we do our part? We wait till they, we make sure they're gonna do it?
We're gonna make sure the sub-grant agreement's in place with the deed of trust and the bond surety and the property rights before we move to award our contractor to, to move one piece of dirt out there.
Good, good plans. It's a good plan.
I mean, is there anybody that, or you're probably already doing it, that you can reach out to to try to grease the wheels on that process with the F A, F A A, or?
We've reached out to those folks. If you've, um, I don't know whether you've ever had any dealings with the railroad before, but F A A is just slightly below the railroad in terms of their, our ability to work out good deals and get things moving. Uh, we have reached out on behalf of the town to several of those individuals. As of yet, we have not heard anything back from either the state agency or the federal agency. So we're gonna continue to push those buttons until, but again, really, it comes down to it, it's an issue that's gonna have to be handled by those main, primary players, and, uh, so far, they haven't shown a willingness or an ability to get that done yet.
That's why I'm leering.
Understand.
And F A A is like that. I've been on the board for years and.
They don't get in a hurry, do they?
They don't get in a hurry for A A.
That's correct.
I move the town council.
Before, Lea, I'm sorry, before you start, it, so is the amount that we, that she's about to motion on six hundred and thirty thousand, or is it five hundred and forty-two?
It is not to exceed six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So it'll be up to that dollar value, but not exceed that.
Okay.
Anything else before?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Sure, no, I didn't wanna cut you off.
I have to do it over again.
I move that the town council award the C D B G Fund at Work at the Loray Meadows apartment in the amount not to exceed six hundred and thirty thousand dollars to Pine Knoll Construction Incorporated, as presented contingent upon execution of a sub-agreement between the town and the People Inc. governing the town property rights and establishing a performance bond to limit the town's financial liabilities. I also move that the town allow up to seventy thousand of the C D B G funds for the project administration on behalf of the town under a separate, separate memorandum of agreement with the Northern Shenandoah Valley Regional Commission. I further move to authorize the mayor, town manager, and assistant town manager, and town attorney to execute necessary bid awards, contract documents, to construct the improvements as presented.
Have a motion?
I'll second.
Have a second, discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Jarrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yes.
Mr. Salvers?
Yes.
Ms. Pence?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you, folks.
This was a really nice job, yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll keep a tight check on them, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Creekside Commons?
Uh, yes, sir, our council's requested to consider, uh, approving the name of Creekside Commons to our new pocket park that's down at North Broad Street.
Is there a, uh, like, are you on a short timeline to get a sign ordered or something, Steve?
Actually, a sign has been ordered.
Okay. With, with this wording on it?
That's a backstory there. How'd that name come about?
At our previous meeting, Meredith Dees had talked with council, and she had suggested Creekside Commons, and at that at that time, council seemed receptive to the name.
Well, then I move that the town formally name the the new pocket park constructed on North Bond Street as Creekside Commons.
I'll second that. Motion is second. Discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll?
Mr. Scharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yeah.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Ms. Pence?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Yes.
Maintenance of privately owned property, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to discuss and consider a motion to continue the town's ground maintenance of privately owned properties that the town has historically maintained. These include caverns water tank, Roughner Plaza, Linden Avenue right of way that's owned by VDOT, the monument at Reservoir Avenue and East Main Street, the monument at Campbell and South Broad Street, Lake Morningstar Reservoir Dam and Spillway, and the Luray Park Association properties.
Okay.
I move that the town council authorize staff to continue providing ground maintenance at the privately owned properties as presented as presented subject to any existing agreement or in the absence of such an agreement, so long as the public use of any access to the property is intended by owner and the properties remain open for public use and access.
Motion?
Second that.
You have a second? Discussion?
Yes. I
Okay.
Um, you know, my stance has always been that anything that we maintain, we should have agreements in place to do that. That was my stance, you know, certainly with Luray Park Association. And as I've expressed in the past, I don't I don't necessarily agree that that association should exist, given that we now have a parks and rec department. So I I again have concerns about us operating without agreements in place, but also, given the controversy around both of the monuments, I would strongly urge you to vote no on the motion.
I have a comment on that. I like the way the motion is set up so that we retain public use of these areas. And these every one of these areas that I know about, it's we've done this for historically for a long term. And the last thing I want to see is any of these properties grown up foot high, and we have to get some type of officer to give them a citation to. I want the town to look nice. And so I think in lieu of even, Leah, that it makes sense to continue what we're doing and maybe seek agreements that we don't have, but at least go with the suggested motion.
I don't think doing what we've always done is necessarily always a good reason for doing something, but I I understand your reasoning. Not mowing it would not prevent people from using it as public land for most of these things. But again, I just I just think that the sensitivity around the monuments is a is a major issue for us to be maintaining. I have no issue with them being maintained by private individuals or third party. We saw a great number of people who are willing to do it. I think it's wonderful that they're willing to do it. I just don't think that a municipality should be involved in something that is really so controversial.
Any other discussion? I have a motion and a second. Danielle, would you call the roll?
Mr. Lancaster?
Yeah.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Ms. Pence?
No.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Scharrow?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on. Brown's Building used by the Railroad Club. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Town has received a request from the Page County Railroad Club to utilize a portion of the Brown's Building as a meeting location as well as storage of their materials. Staff are simply looking for any concerns that council might have that we could work with Jason to develop an agreement for its use if that is council's desire.
Pete, should we just table this till January?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't that be the best thing to do right now?
Yes, sir.
Well, he's just asking for concerns. I mean, I looked through that window the other day. That's not a real nice looking place in there. And I'm not sure why the Railroad Club wants to use it to begin with. But I don't want
They're doing renovations to the building that they're in.
Make it easier for them.
What's the reconnection fee, given that the water service is disconnected?
In order for the building to be used, currently, the water has been disconnected as part of the bridge project. In order to allow them to have restrooms, we we either the Railroad Club or the town would have to incur cost to install a one-inch meter and extend the water service into the building. And then the original water service to the building was on the southeast side of the building. The new meter is on the southwest side of the building.
Okay.
So it's not as simple as just punching a hole in the wall and connecting it. You would then have to run a line to where the original service was to feed the building. So and then the water service has been disconnected for I don't know how many years now.
At least two years. And we would have to heat the building too again.
Correct.
Because right now, it's not water service in there, and we have to heat both the upper and the lower portion of the floor to keep things operating.
Well, it sounds like maybe we should table this when we have more facts about what's going to happen.
It's not as allowing them to use it is simple. The fact that there's no water complicates the usage.
Sounds like it.
Couldn't they even get an occupancy permit to use it?
I don't think so.
Doesn't sound like it.
That that is one of the issues. We would have to restore water service for it to
This came to us one time before. We said no. All right, next month. Luray Meadow Sub Grant Agreement. Burke?
Yes, sir. As we started discussing, Jason has developed a sub grant agreement based on input. We had previously approved a sub grant agreement. The folks at DHCD came back and took exception to some of the language, and Jason has drafted a an updated version for your consideration. We are not asking you to approve it yet due to the ongoing issues with the property. If and when we get more information from People Inc. that they their funding is secure and and they can proceed with obtaining the surety and and everything else that is necessary for us to consider the sub grant agreement, we would bring it back to to you all at that time. We simply wanted to present to you where we're at, and in a perfect world, in another month, we'll be able to say, yes, everything has been ironed out, and we would recommend council authorizing us to go forward with this sub grant agreement. But again, we just wanted to get it in front of you this evening. And if there's any questions that you all might have about it.
Would you have any questions before we move on?
No, I think it's a good job. I think it's I think it's needed.
Mr. Buckens, you're turning it flat.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have a draft deed of boundary line adjustment that was shared with you prior to the meeting. Really, the meats and potatoes of this are Exhibits A and B that are attached. Exhibit A is a boundary line adjustment flat. Exhibit B depicts easements that will be retained as part of our boundary line adjustment. This is the Brown's Building. You'll see that this is a concept that Mr. Christman and I have worked on. Essentially, what we would propose is any part of any disposition of the property is that the town retain a portion of the property that contains the building to the rear of that, and that that portion then be combined with the town's current parcel that's owned on the other side of Hawksville. The rationale behind that is that there are public utilities that run through that parking lot in the rear of the building that the town would need to access and maintain. Also, that would preserve the town's ability to use that portion of the property for town events and parking and really any any other use of the town with a vision. I wanted to get this before you tonight and also ask for authorization to proceed with recording the deed of boundary line adjustment and answer any questions you may have.
And gentlemen,
That was our original agreement when we bought the building to, you know, get control of the greenway that we didn't have. I'm all for that.
Gentlemen, one of the things I want you to think about as you move forward with Brown's Building is and currently in the code, if it's used as residential, it does require one parking spot. So just something to think about as we move forward with stripping away parking. Thank you.
And as as part of the disposition of the property, we could include in that the portion of the property that's being conveyed to a purchaser in easement over the rear lot that's going to be retained by the town to the extent necessary for them to comply with with parking requirements.
Or we might even readjust the code because there are several other properties that don't have parking that are already in violation. So. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or statements for Mr. Buckens?
I think it's a good idea. I think we should.
Thank you, Jason.
Do you need an action from us at this point?
Oh, sorry.
I'll move that we approve the proposed boundary adjustments as presented by the town attorney and authorize them to proceed with establishing those changes.
Motion is second. Discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Ms. Pence?
Yes.
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Scharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Thank you, Mr. Buckens.
While we're on this, what what what's going on with our donation of the Blue Ridge Bank property? Has that been done? Are we still working on that?
I can I can respond to that. We're in the process of drafting the deed of gift to the town and also an assignment of the bank's existing lease to the property. It includes the cell equipment on the property. So we anticipate having having that ready very shortly.
Thank you, nation.
Good, thank you. Council have any comments? I don't have any, so let's go into a closed meeting. Real property, potential disposition. I'll take a motion.
I move that we do that. It's closing now.
You got to read that motion. Jerry, you got it, don't you?
Yeah, somewhere.
I can read it. I move that the town council convene and go into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussion or consideration of the disposition of public property publicly held real real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the town's bargaining position or negotiating strategy as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A3 of Code of Virginia. The subject matter is a possible disposition of publicly held property, real property at 36 West Main Street.
Have a motion? Discussion? Danielle, would you call the roll?
Mr. Bickers?
Yes.
Mr. Dolph Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Scharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Lancaster?
Yeah.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Ms. Pence?
Yes.
Council will stand in German for about ten minutes.
Well, we got to say that loud.
Just to take long.